April 7, 2022 will now come to order, and we will have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Brain.
Let's pray. God, we just love you. We thank you for this day. Thank you for all the many blessings that you lay upon each and every one of our lives, Father. We thank you for this opportunity to serve in a capacity, Father, that glorifies you. We just pray tonight that our decisions, you're pleased with them, Father, and that we just do it for the best of the parish, Father. We love you. We thank you. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshar.
Here.
Mr. Andropont.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Vice President Barti.
Here.
Mr. Brain.
Here.
Mr. Burley.
Here.
Mr. Gillery.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Landry.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markantel.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Tremonti.
Here.
And President Stelly.
Here.
Everyone's present.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're going to move to item 3C. Adopt a resolution approving-
Make a motion.
-a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and Tony Mancuso, Sheriff of Calchasue Parish, for, one, maintenance, repairs, and improvements of the Calchasue Correctional Complex; two, provisions for in-feeding of parish prisoners; and, three, office space for CPSO personnel. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Brain. Is there any discussion? Any objection? If we would like to call Sheriff Mancuso up, please?
I'm David Brookhouse. I'm counsel for Sheriff Mancuso. Just to say a few words on behalf of all of the sheriff and you guys, we really want to thank you for getting this done. Mr. Gabb played a very important role here. We had a hard-fought negotiation, and we reached an agreement. I think that's going to be the best for all your constituents and all the people of Calchasue Parish. The sheriff is satisfied, and this is going to be a long-term agreement. So, you know, it's been a long time since we negotiated agreement. It was back to 2011, and we consider this to be a long-term agreement that can take us far into the future. So, on behalf of the sheriff, I just wanted to say thank you, and also want to say thank you to the committee that you guys appointed. I know Mr. Stelly was integral in doing that as well, but that committee was very integral and important to getting this done. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, David. I think we have some questions. Mr. Brain, comments? Do you have any comments?
Uh, no.
Go ahead, Tony.
No, I just want to tell you, thank you. David actually twisted my arm. That's what happened. He told me to shut up and not say a whole lot. No, I want to thank each one of you individually. I know many of us met during this, and I want to thank you for being attentive and listening, and I appreciate all your hard work on this. I know it took some time, but we appreciate it, and I appreciate it personally. So, and if you have any questions for me, I'll answer any questions if you-
No, sir. You had your opportunity. Go ahead. I will just say, Tony, you do a good job. The sheriff's department does a good job, and we appreciate everything that you do for the parish.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, guys. Thanks, Sheriff.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. We're going to go back to item 1A, presentation of the proposed Calchasue Parish Police Jury Strategic Plan 2022 through 2024. Mr. Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the jury. I am with my great pleasure tonight to present to you your completed strategic plan for the police jury for the period 2022 to 2024. The purpose tonight is to hit the highlights of what are the main elements of this plan, also spend a little time on the process, which I think is important because you serve the public, and they will want to hear the thoroughness of the plan, and what your priorities are reflect what they see, and hopefully those are aligned. Before I get into the details, I do want to recognize our consulting partner in this effort, Emergent Method Company, we've worked with for many years in this particular instance through our original plan back in 2018 and ever since. They've been great to work with. You all have met them. Rowdy Godey is here on their behalf tonight. I appreciate him being here. In addition, John Snow with the company, and Taylor Sterling. So, they will continue to be involved in the implementation, but they've helped us a great deal in forming this, and I just want to thank them for their work. So, what is a strategic plan? It's very simple in one sense. The short answer is that it's the document that reflects the mission of the organization, in this case, the police jury, and what are your highest priorities, and then all the goals and objectives that go into the plan to accomplish those priorities. So, if you don't have it, you have, in this case, a body of 15 elected members. You represent different districts. You have different backgrounds, but you have to come together as a body and agree, in general, on a handful of broad priorities that you say this is important for the next three years. So, it's no small task, but it's an important one. So, this is a big day. Let me go ahead and kick in. This mission, vision, and values, this is not new. You passed these back in 2019, but it continues on. It's a lot of text there. I'm not going to read everything. I do want to remind everybody who certainly might be watching this from the public side, your mission here at the police jury organization is to provide the people of Calchasue Parish with high-quality services and actions that benefit present and future generations in this region. High-quality services is self-explanatory, but I love the fact that you put in your mission that what you're doing today is for the people today, but also those that are the next generation and beyond. And it also goes for what your vision is, to be the model parish in the state of Louisiana in many services. And I think we do that in a lot of ways. One I'll touch on a little later in the presentation is drainage. We had a fantastic presentation tonight on the latest on our drainage efforts, and I'll get into that later. Your core values at the bottom are important, too. That says who we are, and the police jury emphasizes those. There's four. The police jury has vision. The police jury is dependable. You collaborate, and you emphasize and value financial stewardship. That continues. This is a new plan, same values. So, that is a guiding set of statements, if you will, that lead into what we'll get into in details. A little bit of background here. You passed your first plan in January 19. You had a shared set of six strategic priorities. Some of those carried over into this one with a little fine tuning. We did add one on hurricane recovery. Best-laid plans, you go through what's called a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Well, I don't, there was no Nostradamus that would have predicted in 2019 for disasters, you know, pandemic and what have you, and we didn't even include the latest tornado in there. So, you got to roll with the punches. We still got a lot done out of this plan, but of course, a lot of what we've been working on since early 2020 now is applicable to either the pandemic recovery or hurricane recovery. But we also have a lot of good new things, so it's a mixture of both. And back in, I guess, about May of 2021, in earnest, along with Emergent Method, we started the process to give, to put together this updated plan you have in front of you. So, it's about a nine-month process, and there's a reason it takes that long. You've got to do it right. And I'd just like to go through quickly the steps that were involved in coming to this point tonight where we're making this public. The first one, again, way back in May and June, you've got to get all sorts of input. One of the things that, I don't know if I'd call it lucky, but we had to do, as you'll recall, was led by Alberto Galan, of course, on our staff, the Hurricane or Community Recovery Long-Term Disaster Recovery Plan. You passed that in August of 2021, a year from the month where Hurricane Laura hit. Well, a lot of the same input we got then applies to your strategic plan. So, that was a very valuable document. It's being implemented now, just like this plan will be. And we got other plans that others are doing, like the community foundation. So, we could, we could build on that. We also, like we've done every year since 2018, conducted our own employee survey, engagement survey. This is really a welcome thing by the employees. They like being asked their opinions, and they give us their answers. It's mostly good, I'll say that, but they also challenge us to do better, and we're very proud of that input. You follow that up, and this is kind of all in sequence. We meet with each department leader, talk about that department's goals, how are we doing on our current goals and so forth, and what do we see in the next three years? And then we had a full-day strategic planning retreat with those leaders to, we have to take all of these ideas and start boiling them down into something more manageable. So, that was the next step. After meeting with them individually, you meet with them as a group, and then we come in at the point where y'all came in, and we introduced you to a lot of that and said, what we need from you, Giroirs, is to help us take all of that and narrow it down to a handful of priority areas. These are broad. The goals and the detail comes after, and you did that. You had a very good, if y'all recall, we had a good session on January 14 at the Seed Center that y'all helped us get there. So, it's kind of a whittling-down process. We have since then, in mid-January up through now, for the last, basically, three months, almost, taken all that and filled in all the details. There's 108 goals in this plan you have before you, but they all go back to the priorities you agreed to back in January and ever since. And here we are tonight, so we're presenting this plan in full, ready to go, to you. We're not asking for approval tonight. We are going to ask you on your April 21 meeting to adopt the plan that will allow your departments to therefore implement it. So, that's how we got here. One more slide on the, on the process. I'm really proud of this. That survey I mentioned with employees, parish employees, we got 410 responses, 71%. That is an outstanding rate. We don't force them to do this. It's fully anonymous, but voluntarily to get that sort of percentage is outstanding. And on a scale of one to five on how they rated a lot of things, most were in the four or 4.1 range, and that made us feel good, but they also told us areas we could improve. And then 29 department leaders, many of whom are here tonight, I want to thank them in front of all of you for their hard work, for their area. So, how is this booklet, how is this document set up? As I mentioned, the key thing, and it's the main thing for tonight, I'll get to in a minute, is seven strategic priorities defined by you, the police jury, acting as the governing body. And they each have different parts of that which go into detail. I want to point out woven throughout those seven priorities are elements of hurricane recovery. We didn't have that three years ago in that plan, and we cannot, we don't, and y'all emphasize this, we don't want to just say it's off-to-the-side thing. So, there is an actual strategic priority just for the recovery part, but know that all seven of them have elements of that recovery in them. So, let's go through those one at a time. Couple things, it's very important in these seven. These are not ranked, okay? Number one and number five have the same value. We're just numbering them to be able to identify them. Secondly, some of these are what you might call carryovers from the other plan, but y'all either affirm that it's still important, or you said yes, but it's a little different, so let's word it a little different. And then there's some new stuff in there. Number one, develop a framework and processes to lead to more efficient CPBJ operations. I'll let you read the rest. I'll call this the bread-and-butter priority. This means in all of our operations, it's not vision for one thing or one project. It's saying that we, on a day-to-day basis, provide a lot of services people need, and we need to run those well. Animal services, mosquito control, juvenile justice, public works, we ought to be looking at best practices to be effective, what are the latest trends. That's what this is, and y'all said this should be a priority on our day-to-day operations, regardless of what our long-term vision is. Number two, create, facilitate, and prioritize strong quality-of-life measures in the parish so that people can call this place home for years to come. This may be, this is one of the key shifts. Not that you didn't have it in your last plan, but y'all overwhelmingly, in that session and talks individually, along with all the infrastructure, have said, look, for lack of a better phrase, we're kind of behind the eight ball. If you get hit by two hurricanes and a pandemic, and we're still recovering, you've got to sell others that we're still a good place to live, and if a business is here or wants to stay here to invest. We have to do more than, than have the roads and the water. Important as those things are, we have to also know that it's something we've got to overcome because we've been hit so hard by these storms. So, quality-of-life things are a big part of this plan, and it goes into more detail. One of them that I'll get to in a minute that I think fits under that is fighting litter, but that's got its own priority. Number three, still got infrastructure in there. This is a core function of local governments everywhere. This means your roads and bridges, building them, maintaining them. Looking ahead, do we need new roads? Things we're doing now, whether it's Coach Williams Drive, Hamreath Road Extension, Carless Drive Extension, we've got all kinds of things like that that we still need to do, and those are in this plan. It also includes things like waterwork, sewer, and drainage, especially drainage. As a matter of fact, you have drainage included in this one, but it's so important, you have a second one, or excuse me, a separate one just for drainage, and I think that's probably a good idea. It is such a key issue in the last several years and will continue to be as we grow. We have to get that right. I will say, for those of you on the drainage committee, you know this because you were here at 4 o'clock. If you weren't, Allen and his team, along with Finstermaker, had a great presentation on where we are in the modeling efforts that are almost 100% complete, and this is after years of work. Those tools will be an enormous benefit to help you make decisions about what projects should work, may not work, as you go forward, and we make strides in drainage. So, I'm glad, and I know the public is glad, you have this as one of your seven priority-focused areas. Number five is important, too, but this is more along with what you would call standards and codes. You know, that sounds sort of technical. What does that mean? But we're a big parish. We're still growing. We got setback, but we're going to grow back. The population will come. There's going to be housing. It's going to take a while. You've got a parish where you've got a mix of residential areas, commercial areas, industrial areas. Those have to operate and exist together in a way that we operate as a community. That doesn't happen on its own. You've got to have good development codes, and you've got to keep them up. Y'all wanted to emphasize that. So, as we look forward, you want to encourage economic development. You want to encourage subdivisions that don't flood and things like that. Well, you got to have good codes for that, and that's going to be a focus over the next three years. And to be honest, things like building codes and all, we're learning that whatever we thought the highest winds would hit here wasn't good enough. A lot of the improvements when we're doing the hurricane repair projects on our buildings, we're having to increase the ability of these roofs, for example, to handle, or buildings to handle 150 mile-an-hour winds when we had it at 130 and thought, that's never going to be hit. We were wrong. That's the kind of codes we're talking about. And this is one, I think probably five minutes in, three of y'all raised your hand and said, can we put litter in here? I don't mean to be funny. It's a very, frankly, disturbing trend that we've seen in this parish and the whole state. Even the governor has a task force, but litter's always been a challenge, but since the hurricanes, it has just elevated to a point where every one of you, and we all have eyes, it's just, it's a blight. And y'all want to say it's important enough to put in the big priorities and specific plans. We have a lot of programs, some good ones, but we've got to do more, and those values of collaboration are going to help because we need everybody in this. So, reducing litter, and then don't overlook the other one, stormwater quality. If you think of drainage and, excuse me, stormwater systems, basins, if you will, there's two sides of a coin. There's the flood control and flood reduction. The other side is the quality of that same water that flows throughout drainage canals and our rivers. We have to be aware of both, work on both. The quality side, we will continue to work on. That's going to take a long time, but we can't look away from that as well. So, it's both, it's both parts of what you would call stormwater management. Last but not least in your priorities, as I mentioned earlier, is to have an item that says, let's continue disaster recovery efforts in Calchasue Parish while prioritizing future resiliency. One example of this, and it's a big one, if you add up all of the grants that have now mostly been awarded, projects haven't been decided on, but we're getting there, whether it's HMGP money, American Rescue Plan money, funds, CDBG, you're talking about $200 million-ish of money that we now have to go out and invest in a lot of what you would call resiliency projects. This is a tremendous task. And so, y'all said, look, let's have a specific item for that so that we don't let up, and so we can make sure we're staying on track to carry all these out. Just to administer that amount of money is, frankly, pretty, pretty challenging. We'll do it, but it helps us to know that y'all have said this is important. We'll do the goals that fall underneath that. So, again, we take all of those seven priorities, and that was our marching orders at the department level. Go back, and they have, and we set levels of goals that get into great detail that says, okay, what does it mean to have a better quality of life? Or how do you reduce litter? Those are all defined in there, and I'm not going to read through each of these, but each priority and each goal, and there's 108 in this plan, has a lead department, support departments for that goal, and then there's a process for us, an administration, to meet with the departments regularly on the status, the progress, and this is over the three-year period, and then regularly, periodically, we report back to you as the elected body, how are we doing? What do we need to do better? Who do we pat on the back for what we've done? So, that's, it's not, I know this is a cliche, but this isn't, y'all approve it, it's on the shelf, looks good, tell everybody we did a plan. No, you got to implement it. So, that's what, that's what we're going to do next. This simply is just to show you how detailed this is for every department and every goal. There is a, there is a long list of details, and the matrix on the left tells you who the lead is. Any member of the public can view this plan. I'll go ahead and mention it now. It's our next steps. This will be on our website and Facebook tonight, and we encourage the public to read through it, let us know what you think, and understand what y'all, the police jury, are doing for your citizens. So, I'll just go straight into that. That was my last slide, really, except for this next steps. CalchasueParish.gov, there's a special page just for this, but it's easy to find. Again, it's on our social media sites as well. We're not seeking approval, asking you to do this tonight because it's just been presented, but we are going to ask you, as I said earlier, to take this action on your April 21 meeting. Remember, this is a living plan. I know that sounds a little silly. It does to me. I'm not a, I'm not a buzzword kind of guy, but you don't have to set this in stone. We plan to probably ask y'all to have a retreat once a year during this, and it's a check-in that says, how is it going? Do you need to change something? Has something happened that means we got to adjust ourselves? Okay, that's fine. And the other thing to keep in mind, it is a hand-in-glove kind of thing with your budget. So, this guy, this plan is your guide for your goals. This is the, this is who we are, what we're doing. The budget says, here's how we're going to pay for a lot of what's in here. So, the two have to connect. So, come in the fall, when the budgets are made, we're going to be saying, we're going to, what do we, what do we want to do? Well, this is, it's in the plan, and the budget will reflect it. Those aren't two things that don't work together. They, they have to work together. And then the last bullet is, in the administration, we have a steering committee just for this, but I can assure you, all departments, and it's about 30 people, have an assigned strategic plan person or persons in their department that we go to so there, it's easy to understand, who do we go to to track all this? With that, that's a lot in a little bit of time, but this is officially public now and presented, and certainly if you are any questions or comments, I'll certainly try to answer them or anybody here from the departments.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Bean? Okay, I need a motion to receive report.
Motion to receive report.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Hayes. Is there any other discussion? Any, any objection? Hearing none. 1A carries. Item 2A, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract between the police jury and Oakland and Associates for various projects within the Calchasue Parish Capital Improvement Project Program. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 2A carries. Item 2B.
Motion to-
Adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract between the police jury and CH Finstermaker and Associates for various projects within the Calchasue Parish Capital Improvement Project Program. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Andropont. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 2B carries. 2C, adopt a resolution approving a sale and purchase of property agreement for the Amaco Road Bridge Replacement Project. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Hayes. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 2C carries. 2D.
Motion to-
Adopt a resolution approving an active sale agreement for the Curry Drive Bridge Replacement Project. Motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Andropont. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 2E carries. Item 2F, adopt a resolution approving an active sale agreement along with a utility and drainage servitude for the Curry Drive Bridge Replacement Project. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Lewis. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. John, could you, could you answer one question for me? Hopefully, I don't think it's too out of left field, but I know we were trying to hit a timeline to where this bridge, the bulk of the project and the road being out of service was going to happen during the summer. Have we been put back, pushed back or anything by the, you know, storm, pandemic, whatever that we've been going through for the past couple of years?
Yes, sir. We definitely have. We have been in close communication with the school board on access. Of course, one of the major concerns on this bridge being out of service is the school, Cypress Cove School. So, the schedule is going to be impacted because of that. We are pushing it forward as fast as possible, but be assured that access in the area is a primary consideration on the, on the project.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barris.
Along those lines with the school, and there's, that road, Curry Drive, as we know, runs east and west.
Yes, sir.
Should there be an accident on, with the bridge being out on the west side? Is there any conversations going on for an alternate route for security purposes if buses had to get in and out for that school?
Yes, sir. There have been through, through many months of coordination with the school board on contingencies such as that, because it is in a very vulnerable, very difficult situation with the pipelines, including we have explored access from the south and the east as far as an emergency event.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you, John. Item 2G.
Move on 2G.
Adopt a resolution approving the expropriation of property for the Sarah Street Bridge Replacement Project. I have a motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? 2G carries. Item 3A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated March 3, 2022. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Gillery. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 3A carries. 3B, approve the parish-wide drainage committee report dated April 7, 2022. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The parish-wide drainage committee met at 4:00 PM this afternoon, received an update from staff regarding the watershed planning and-
Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The parish-wide drainage committee met at 4:00 PM this afternoon, received an update from staff regarding the watershed planning and strategic analysis initiative. The five-phase initiative is currently in phase four, which includes risk assessment and consequence modeling of identified projects. Those selected for implementation will begin the process of environmental assessments and benefit cost analysis. The goal for these watershed improvement projects is to begin funding cycles in the police jury's fiscal year 2023 budget. Also announced was a webinar-based informational series to begin on May 11, 2022 for stakeholders, technical community, and general public to learn more details and information about the strategic watershed management plan. Mr. President, I make a motion to receive report.
I have a motion to receive report by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Braim. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 3B carries.
Move on 3D.
Item 3D, adopt a resolution in support, I'm sorry. Adopt a resolution in support of the U.S. Congressional delegation's effort to secure community project funding for the West Calcasieu Cameron Hospital Backup Water Plant Project and the Airport Fire Station Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting Project. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 3D carries. Item 4A.
Move on 4.
Adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the police jury and Dr. Terry Welke, Calcasieu Parish Coroner, which outlines the duties and responsibilities of the coroner and the police jury in the operations of the Calcasieu Parish Coroner's Office and forensic facility. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Barris. Mr. Andre Pott.
I'd like for staff to explain, what all does this entail?
Mr. Andre Pott, you, as you know, the agreement with Dr. Welke is, got two parts. He, he serves as both the coroner, which is an elected position, but also forensic pathologist, which is the autopsy side of things. On the coroner side, which this one applies to, you have different fees that come into his office for all kinds of things he's responsible for, and it's really housekeeping. These are things, I think it's called OPC fees and cremation permit fees, and we just want to make sure that the agreement spells out how those go through us and then to their office. So that's really the two main areas. It's, it doesn't change anything fundamentally with the agreement in that sense.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any, any other discussion? Hearing none. Item 4A carries. Item 5A. Approve applications for liquor and beer permits. Staff recommends one new and three renewal applications be approved. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? 5A passes. 5B, adopt a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement related to the regional capacity building grant funded by the Louisiana Watershed Initiative. I have a motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Lewis. I forgot your name. Is there any discussion? Any objection? 5B carries. 5C, adopt a resolution indicating no objection to the proposed project, 5215 Gosferre Road in Ward 1, Calcasieu Parish. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Markantel. Is there any discussion? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What is that? What is that about?
They're putting in a, I mean, you can read it, it's, they're putting in a seawall and dock and.
Whereabouts is that?
Yeah, the Office of State Land, they require a letter of no objection from the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury. For some reason, that's what they require.
Because of the location?
Yeah, it's in, it's in a state, you know, it's in that, in the river.
Yeah.
So I guess it's part of the state, the bottom of the river or something that they own.
So this is not anything new?
No, sir.
This is.
Okay.
All right, thank you. 6A, adopt a proclamation that April 2022 is Fair Housing Month in Calcasieu Parish. I have a motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any, any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 6A.
Move on 7A.
7A, approve payment of all current invoices. I have a motion by Mr. Andre Pott and a second by Mr. Abshar. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 7A carries. 7B, adopt a resolution accepting the old courthouse chiller replacement project as substantially complete. You want to know what substantially complete means?
Somebody just don't know where.
By Mr. Braim and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussions? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 7B carries. Item 7C, adopt a resolution for an electronic health record-keeping system.
Motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by.
Mr. Barti.
Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 7C carries. I'm sorry, after review of proposal, staff recommends Spiral FX Interactive be selected as a software provider. Are we done with that?
Yes.
7D, adopt a resolution for the overlaying of various roads in wards 2 and 3. Staff recommends the bid of RE Height Construction LLC in the amount of $5,153,817.38 be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar, I'm sorry, Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Abshar. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 7D carries. 7E.
Move on 7E.
Action on bids for library furniture and shelving. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I have noticed over the last couple of meetings, we had a lot of bids coming in for library projects. My biggest concern is really what's going on with the Epps Library. I know we are waiting on a few, I guess, approvals to come through, but I know it's really affecting the quality of life because, you know, in that community, like, a lot of kids depend on that, a lot of adults depend on the internet service, computer service, and yet still is down. We actually have an actual trailer there, but that, that, that trailer is very, very small. I mean, it is like, I don't know how many hiles, it's like two computers and about three rows of books. And I, I think it's kind of unacceptable for that. Now, I don't know how long it would take to get it rebuilt or whatever process it is, but I would like to probably see an actual larger trailer put there to accommodate things because we are missing out on a lot of summer programs. Like I say, we always talk about the quality of life, so we're missing out on that right there in the, in the community. So I don't know who can answer that question for me because I've been getting a lot of calls about the library, because I know they had an article, a news article about a couple of weeks ago about the repairs going on in other libraries, and yet still Epps is not even mentioning any type of bidding process. Zero, nothing.
Okay, on, on this particular item, staff recommends the bids of Arnold &amp; Associates, Interiors Incorporated, and Library Interiors Incorporated be accepted. I'm sorry, I didn't put that.
Mr. President, if I could, I know Marjorie's coming up. It might be an answer that both, Marjorie Harrison is the library director.
If Dean Kelly needs to come up on the other side, it's probably a two-part answer. So if you want, depending on what the answers are, we're happy to have Dean come up after Marjorie.
Yeah, Dean, if you want to come up too, just in case someone hasn't. State your, your name and position for the record, ma'am.
Sure, I'm Marjorie Harrison. I'm the library director with the Calcasieu Parish Public Library.
Thank you, go ahead. Go ahead, ma'am.
Oh, sure. So, yes, I, I agree. It's a small portable building that we have on the Epps Library property. We recently learned that the, the building will need to be demolished, and so we're working on designs right now, and so that is in the process. If you all know of a temporary location that we could go to that would be better than the portable building, we're keeping our eyes and ears open.
Yeah, I kind of thought, like, it's kind of hard probably to find, you know, another location. I don't know, maybe a larger building, because I know when I went in there, you know, me and myself, it was small. So I, so I could just imagine, you know, having a bunch of other people up in there, you know. And, I mean, I was very shocked because half of the building is like used for an actual bathroom and storage, and you only have about the size of a closet for the rest of the public to get in there and do anything, so.
Yeah, it is small. And to be fair, when we, we actually received a grant to put it out there and we set it up, and we, we thought it wasn't going to be there that long. And, and so things progressed, and now we know we have to rebuild. And so, yeah, so we are keeping our eyes and ears open, so.
But yeah, we could be on, on lookout for a temporary location.
Please, yes.
Or, like I say, a larger modular-type building or something.
We can look, look into that too, yeah. Because there's access issues with modular buildings too, you know, so that's what we were trying to see if we could maybe find some other place.
Finished, Mike?
Yeah, I'm finished, Mr..
Mr. Markantel.
Yeah, I think one thing is frustrating, I know to me, and I don't know about the rest of the jurors, you made the statement, we just found out it has to be torn down.
Right.
That's after 19 months, we're just finding out that, because that structure probably will not be up for who knows how much longer now.
Over our 10 years or nothing like that.
You know, and I mean, that's just, like he said, in, in far as, my belief is, that's just totally unacceptable. For 19 months, we didn't know a building had to be torn down.
We, it went through a process, and that's where I guess Dean can talk about that.
I think that's not her, I think it's Dean.
Yeah, Dean, come up, please, state your name and position.
Dean Kelly, Director of Facilities for the Police Jury. Sadly enough, there's not a real, there's not a great answer for that. The processes that we have to go through to evaluate these facilities, work with the insurance companies, and then after that, work through FEMA to get some of these decisions made and secure funding. It, it, it's an all, it's a long process. It's one that I'm not in full control of. It's, it's the processes we have to work through to try and rebuild our community.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just kind of scared because I know, like, we spoke last time about the coroner building, they spoke about 15 years in the making. Hopefully, this is not another 15 years in the making to get this rebuilt because.
No, it's a different, it's a complete different scenario altogether.
Okay. Mr. Tremonti, are you through, Mr. Markantel?
Of course, another question is, if we got insurance, I mean, what all are we waiting on FEMA on that end?
Have to work with, it's a simultaneous process where you, you work with the insurance companies to get your estimates, just the same as you do with your homes, but depending on the level of damage, you have to, you have to protect against an underinsured situation. And what happened here, you know, we have, we've had storms that hit that were in excess of the level of, of construction. So like Brian mentioned, if we built a roof to 130 mile an hour winds and we had 150 mile an hour winds, that's more of a catastrophic nature. So because of that level of damage, you, you reach the limits of your insurance. So simultaneously, as we're working through that, we also have to work with FEMA hand in hand from day one to try and get through all of their checks and balances to make sure when you reach your, your limit on insurance, FEMA can help out. By doing so, you are protecting your local funding. If you didn't go through these processes as long as they are, you potentially would run out of insurance funding, use up your local funding, and you would not have satisfied FEMA's requirements, therefore you couldn't tap into the FEMA money.
Mr. Tremonti.
I'll answer my question.
Mr. Andre Pott.
Real briefly, I know we keep coming up, it seems like to Mr. Smith's point about facilities. Mr. President, I'd like to see at a future committee meeting that we just have a committee meeting discussing all facilities, conditions, and I, I think it would be prudent, I know there's a committee, but I'm just wondering, Mr. Gab, if there could be a committee as a whole to hear this, because this, there's really an interest around this table about facilities and the conditions they're in.
Well, I actually wrote down here a suggestion that we, we do get a group of us together and for y'all to present and a, some type of valuation, if that's correct, of, of what is out there left to be done, where the funds are coming from, and just in approximate time of when these, we've had this come up a couple of times or several times now, and I, I think everyone is right that, that we should get some type of notification about where these buildings are.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I will say this, the timing's good. We already, we're planning to meet with y'all in groups. We want to make sure all of you have a chance to hear it and ask questions, both on our new building, what we call the bond projects, and hurricane repair. They're two completely different things. As y'all know, sometimes even might be a building getting repaired and we're going to do a new one. So the timing's good for that. We can get with you on how you want to conduct it to where you, we cover all the bases.
Does everybody agree with that?
And we, we will do that soon.
Good.
Thank you, thanks, Brian. Mr. Tremonti.
Thank you, sir. Dean, what, what would be the timeline moving forward, getting either a larger building or maybe a couple extra buildings out to Epps from today? I mean, what do we look at, six mans? Maybe modular buildings or?
I can't answer the question right off the cuff, that there's a process, but what I would like to do is follow up with you. We will get those answers and we will follow up.
What we, what we'll do is we'll focus on Epps first on the committee, and then we will move on to the other buildings, if that's okay as well. We kind of went off of the path here, which is fine for now, but if you don't mind, that's what we're going to do, Brian. Thank you, thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. 7F, adopt a resolution for the Alta Road Bridge Replacement Project.
So moved.
Staff recommends the bid of Gwen Construction LLC in the amount of $696,942 be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Braim. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 7F carries. 7G, action on bids for water level station monitoring parts.
So moved.
Staff recommends the bids of Blue Water Design Technologies LLC, Campbell Scientific Incorporated, High Sierra Electronics Incorporated, and Ott Hydromet Corporation be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objection? 7G carries. 7H.
Move on 7H.
Action on bids for automated external defibrillator AED equipment and replacement parts. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 7H carries. Adopt, 7I, adopt a resolution for the mosquito control hurricane repairs project. Staff recommends that the bid of K&amp;J Development of Southwest Louisiana LLC in the amount of $1,430,000 be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Andre Pott. Is there any discussion? Any objection? 7I carries. 7J.
Move to.
Advertise for bids for overlaying of various roads towards 5, 6, and 7. I have a motion by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 7J carries. 7K, advertise for bids for Amaco Road Bridge Project. I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 7K carries. Item 8A, is board appointments, community center and center and playground district number four in Ward 1. There's a motion to appoint Mr. Robert Boom because of the resignation of Mr. Willie Billy Wilcox. I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Tremonti. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Mr. Robert Boom is appointed. Item 8B.
Move to reappoint Dale Hernandez.
Ward 4, Fire Protection District Number 2, to reappoint Mr. Dale Hernandez. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Andre Pott. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Hi, item 8B carries, for Mr. Dale Hernandez's reappointment. Item 8C.
Boy, Mr. Bustle.
Ward 5, Fire Protection District Number 1. Move to appoint Mr. Gary Russell. Ward 5, Fire Protection District number 1, move to appoint Mr. Gary Russell.
Bustle.
I'm sorry, oh, Bustle, I'm sorry. Due to the resignation of Mr. George Pete Miller. I have a motion by Mr. Markentel and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Excuse me, Mr. Gary Bustle is appointed. Item 8D.
Move to appoint Mr. Mike Granger.
West CalcShoe Airport Managing Board. Mr., uh, excuse me, there's an appointment by Mr., uh, I mean, a motion to appoint Mr. Mike Granger by Mr. Andre Pott and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Mr. John Wells, I'm sorry, Mr. Mike Granger is appointed. The 9A is an advise, Recreation District number of Ward 8 for Miss Beverly Martin. Item 10, I need a motion to go into executive.
Move to executive.